Seeing any, thank you. And pausing for a moment for any public comment. And not seeing any. All right. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, beginning with the minutes that are in your packet. These minutes were sent out to members by the administration ahead of time, and of course, you also have a hard copy in your packet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Larry.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, those in favor. Greg?
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and they are approved. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Mr. King.
Thank you. So we have a few items tonight to discuss. I'd like to start with a district leadership team update. We have our special education director, our student support director here tonight, Ms. Nicole Haru, who's going to tell us a little bit about a program that we have in place called Care Solis.
Thank you. I just, I'm really happy and excited that we were able to start this initiative this year for our school district. Care Solis is a program that we decided to institute due to finding out that our students and families were having really a difficult time finding therapists in the area to support their social emotional needs, substance abuse, and other things that families are struggling with these days. Our guidance staff and our school adjustments counselor were spending numerous hours, unavowed, to find out that there is no counselors to support our students, and it was really taking away from their time of searching for providers. So there was a company that reached out to us called Care Solis, and they work within 300 school districts, services over 3 million students, and also can service staff members and their families. We thought this was a great opportunity. At the beginning of school year, our guidance staff, our nurses, and our principals went through a basic training on how this program works. The great part of this program is there's three different entities that you can actually follow. You can do what's called a warm handoff. So what happens is our adjustment counselors, nurses, staff, when they find out that there's a student at need and talk to the family, and they say they need support helping, trying to find counseling services, they make a call and put in an initial referral to Care Solis. They give a phone number, they give the parent contact or the guardian's contact. At that point, it's in Care Solis's hands. They will then contact the person who was referred, the family, and say, what are you actually looking for? What kind of supports do you actually need? At that point, they will start making phone calls, talking to people in the area. They will find out if the family wants to do virtual or live in-person in sessions, and within 48 hours, they will have a student attached to a therapist or a service provider that they need. Now, we were having not such luck because we're between working with our students in the school with issues that are going along with them. It was hard for us to get that quick turnaround for our families. So that's one option that we have with this program. The other part that we can have is that there is a program that 24/7, so anytime at night a family member needs support, they can call and get an emergency referral for Support Network. It also has providers with different languages, because we do have students who speak other languages than English, so that can also help us. The other thing is they, we can have a unanimous, we don't need to actually be the one to place this call. So families might want to make the call on their own, and with that being said, we can give them the number, and they can do their own referral. So there's three different options of what you can do. The nice thing about that is that we can also have our staff utilize it. We've had numerous staff members who said, can I just have the phone number? We don't take any of their information. It's not our business. And our staff can actually refer family members of their own. So if you have a child, you're an English teacher at the high school, and you have a child at need, you can reach for your child for this program also. Families are having such a difficult time. Mental health and illness is just at a rise due to COVID. And being out of schools, we're seeing a lot of trauma within the classrooms, and we have kids who have really significant needs and supports. Our families are really enjoying having this option. We, so it's a very quick process, as I said. And then if you don't match up with that individual, they will help you find another one. If you go in and you're like, oh, my daughter or son didn't connect to that person, all you have to do is place a call. Some families don't have the access to be able to maneuver calling, making those appointments, and they need our support and help doing that. So when they call Care Solis, they call, and they say, would you like me to actually make the appointment for you? Or would you like me to give a list of the providers I found in the area? There's options. They will also be involved in the intake meeting. Some parents need that help and support, guardians need that help and support. We also have grandparents who have not experienced this, and it's something new with them. But they will step you through the entire process, which is fabulous. So live in-person help as quick as possible. I will give you this power presentation, point presentation. Unfortunately, technical glitches, I wasn't able to. So I also wanted to let you know how much students and people we are servicing at this time. So 60% of their clients through Winchonin right now are males, and there's 40% females. The average student who gets services is three to 11 years old, and it's 74% of our population who actually looked into Care Solis. This company actually gives us a, actually graph that says how many referrals we've made. We've had 244 contacts in September, and we've raised by now, since September, 612 contacts with families in Winchonin. So our families are really using this program, and it's really helping the community. We do have the opportunity at Winton Time to allow town, citizen, people from the town who work for the community to also participate in this program. So that's another thing that we are looking forward to. So we, one thing that we have is 95 students right now are getting services. Students, staff members, and families. When I talk to them, when I talk to Care Solis, they're like, your numbers are getting higher. That shows once we, we keep on starting to publicize this. Principals are now putting it in their newsletters to let people know, we have this. And we, if you need help, we can support you with this. It's just been great. So we're really excited that this is happening in the district. And it has alleviated our counselors, so they can work on the issues that are at hand. What's happening in schools? Why are kids misbehaving? Why are they having some trauma in school? So they're really able to do the hands-on work within the school, rather than, you know, as much as we want to support them for their home issues, we want to help them in their classroom and help them maintain in the classroom. We've seen a rise of students who have needs in schools. And it's not only in Winchonin, it's across the country. You go and you talk to any administrator or teacher, they're all saying the same thing. COVID did a real tough number on our families, and we're trying to do anything we can support them to make their lives easier. And this is just one way that we feel that we're benefiting them. The top thing that we're seeing for our students who are getting referred right now is for anxiety. So there's anxiety. Then very far behind that is trauma, depression, disruptive behavior, and problems of marital. So it could be a parent's divorce. It could be actually a staff member going through a divorce. So those are the top four, five things that we're actually getting referrals for. And then it also tells us what type of insurance people are using. Blue Cross Blue Shields is number one. We have students who are using Mass Health, Tricare Prime. Flying High Farm, I'm not sure of that insurance, but our families have it. 50% of our families are using that.
What is it called?
It's Flying High Farm. I've never heard of it myself. So those are all different services that we're using. So we're really happy. I just wanted to, I have this on the presentation, some quotes that parents I have actually spoken to. One family said, thank you so much for my son getting referred to the program. I could not find anyone to see my son, and this was so easy. Another family said, they did everything for me. It was so easy, even to talk to them to get him into therapy. I would have done this a long time ago if I knew it was aware. So these are, people are giving positive result, feedback to this program. And I would like to meet and share more data come the end of the year, so we can let you know how, how much we're doing, how good we are.
Mr. Chair?
Larry?
What's the name of the program again?
Care Solis.
How do you spell that?
It's C-A-R-E-Solis, S-O-L-I-C-E.
Okay. You mentioned 95, I was a little unclear. You said 95 student staff and families are receiving services?
Mm-hmm.
That?
Yes.
So it's not 95 students necessarily?
No.
It's 95?
It's in general right now.
In general, 95. Out of 600?
Nope. So the 612 are actually communications that they have. So that's the feedback that they've been like calling and the communications going on to get those 95 families involved in the counseling services.
Okay, so that counts back and forth?
Yes.
Emails and phone calls and that kind of stuff. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Greg?
First of all, thanks for making sure that people are aware that the help is out there and putting this program together. Are, are we unusual for districts in the area, or are other districts that you're aware of utilizing the same?
No, we, actually, I was on our meeting with our collaborative, and there are actually three different collaboratives using this program right now. So it's, it's up and coming. People across the state are starting to use it. It goes through multiple states. And I don't think we're the only community having these issues with our students needing more support. I think everybody's out there struggling with how to help our kids.
And also, it, you mentioned something rather quickly, and I just want to make sure that I understand. Our staff, you say, have access to this as well for their families, their children?
So all our staff have received the number, and they just have to say they're from Winchonin Public Schools, and it starts the process immediately. If they want us to help them, we can do that soft turnover, and we can make the call for them if they're not comfortable with it.
Thank you.
And they can actually use, utilize it for their family members. So they don't have to be an employee just because they work for us. Their children are eligible, or their spouses are eligible.
Thank you.
Nicole, thank you very much for this information. My only question is about the modality in which the assistance takes place. I think I heard you mention that telephonic or Zoom is an option and live or in-person?
Yes.
And how does that?
So what happens is, so I can give you an example, because I actually used it for my own child, who was in need of some services. So I always say, if I have something to share about my own family, and it's prevalent for people, I decide I want to get my son counseling services for one reason or another. I placed the call to Care Solis. I told them what my concerns were. They said, we'll be back in touch with you within 24 hours. They asked my criteria. Why do you need the services? What are your concerns? What do you want their specialty? Do you want to be live in-person, or do you want a Zoom meeting with the therapist? Well, I want live in-person. I don't want Zoom anymore. We're done with that. We're all done with that. So within 24 hours, they gave me a list of six providers. They said, our options are, we can make the calls for you and set up an appointment, or here we go, we'll pass it off to you. Here's the five or six people we found. If you don't like any of those providers, you call us, and we'll find more providers for you. If I didn't call them back right away, which I took a couple of days, they called me back. Are you all set? Do you still need support? What do you need help? Did you match up with a provider? So they will walk you through the entire process and, and give you exactly what you need for services. I was pretty amazed when I tried it myself. I actually wanted to like test it out to see if it really worked or not, because I don't want to advocate for this program if it's a difficult thing to do. So, and they did say, they said, do you want us to call and make the appointment? You can stay on the line. I'm like, no, I, I think I can do it myself, and I was able to. But if there is a family, you know, we have a lot of grandparents who are guardians for our children, and it might be hard for them. We have foster parents who, who need support and help, and it might be, you know, if they have numerous foster children at home, and it's hard to take the time. So they will make those phone calls and set up. And you can also say the radius if you want the in-person, in-person therapy. So if you're willing to drive 30 miles, they can find someone within that radius. If you say, I want someone within 10, it might be a little more difficult because of our location, but they'll do the best of their ability.
Mr. Chair?
Greg?
Just ask a quick question, and either one of you can answer it. I, I think it's great that we have these services. As I said, I'm glad that you're, you're doing this. But my only question is, if we refer someone to an outside provider like this, and something, for whatever reason, goes horribly wrong, what, what's the exposure of the school district?
Yeah, I mean, so I think the interesting piece, this isn't, it's the virtual aspect of this which is new and unique. It's not that, this is a practice that we have routinely. Our social workers might do this on, on a regular basis, maybe guidance counselors depending on the grade level. So it's not necessarily a new process, it's the approach. So this is pretty typical. We work with families pretty regularly, and then it, it's really just a handoff to those organizations. We're, we're just really a conduit, if you will, so we're not exposed. The relationship then becomes between the family and the provider, you know, through their, their personal insurance, those types of things.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, you know, since we're the ones that connect them.
And I would like to add, we do also have providers come in at the high school level from Haywood. I don't want to disclaim that we're not, we did not stop that service. But there are so many students at need, we thought there was another, we needed more support. So we do have counselors that come in from Haywood that support our students also. And we have other outside providers. We are willing, if there's a therapist, even if we made the referral or not, if there's a therapist who says, can I meet with a student at school? We will find a place for that student to meet, as long as it's not going to trigger any, any issues during the school day for the child.
And I think, just, you know, coming from having worked in a more urban setting, you know, it's really interesting out here. Regardless of COVID, it's, it's difficult to access services, you know. One of the big differences that we have versus an urban setting is, is the access to services. And it's great that Haywood is nearby, but it's not the same thing as working in an urban setting where quite literally you could have a middle school student, instead of walking home, walks to his therapist. Which is sort of amazing to think about, but it's something that, you know, I've experienced personally working in an urban setting, where the student leaves school each day and walks to his counselor, his therapist down the street on the way home. And we don't have that access here. So I think regardless of COVID, and you know, how we got here, it's a great service to have that, you know, whether, you know, we not, might not all want to do it through Zoom, but to be able to have those options and provide wraparound services to our students in a more meaningful way is a really nice thing to have. So it's pretty exciting that we have it.
Sorry, just real quick. Do we have, if a student is seeing someone virtually, do we have a room set aside, space set aside for, basically for privacy for them to do this, or nobody else?
We do. And some of those Zoom meetings are held after school. Most of our students have Chromebooks, and if they need to do a Zoom meeting and a family does not have a computer or Chromebook to access, we can, we can share. We can let them use it. Not many of them are doing those Zoom meetings during the school day. If it's necessary, we'll absolutely support, and there's plenty of private areas that we can do that in.
Thank you. Nicole, if a family wants to learn more about this, do they go to their school counselor?
They can access their school nurse, their counselor, their principal, or myself.
Fantastic.
And I will print out this presentation, so it can be located in Mr. King's office, and I will make sure I share it to all of you also.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
So we do have a couple of other items tonight on the superintendent's report. I'm going to start with the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation grant update. So it's the time of year, not just the schools, but across Winchonin, that we're submitting our grant request to the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation. We do that through the town manager. It's a very different process than what we do with, with Murdoch Trust. So Robinson Broadhurst actually requests a, a, a grant application, you know, relatively formal request, and outline exactly what it is you're requesting funds for. So as we've mentioned over the past year, we've been working hard to come up with a plan to remove the traditional components that we've been applying into Robinson Broadhurst. So traditionally Robinson Broadhurst, we've actually used to primarily pay for our Chromebook initiative, which is every student in the district has, is, is assigned a Chromebook. So we call that our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. And Robinson Broadhurst has been used to pay for that, I, I, for I don't know how long. But it's the primary, it's the primary use of Robinson Broadhurst and has been for quite some time. You know, we're not terribly comfortable with that. If something happened to Robinson Broadhurst for whatever reason, a down economic year, whatever those reasons may be, you know, we would no longer have, in, in our current state, a, a way to supply those Chromebooks. We lease the Chromebooks every year. It comes out to somewhere around $100,000. So it's been very important to us, and, and quite frankly, through conversations with the Robinson Broadhurst and, and their organization, that we moved that into the general budget, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do. It's where that sort of thing belongs. So as we discussed last year during the budget season, that's what we would be doing this year. So in our, in our grant application this year, it's a little bit different than traditional. You know, like I said, traditionally it's been the, the Chromebooks, as well as kind of dual enrollment, and a little bit of supply money for most specifically, most specifically it's been for memorial school, because Murdoch Trust doesn't cover that lower grade level. So we moved memorial's supplies into the general budget this past year. Now we're going to move the Chromebooks in, and so we're able to do just purely enrichment activities through Robinson Broadhurst. That's the application we made this year and submitted to the town manager. So I just wanted to go through what that is. So for this year, for grades 11 slash 12 is the dual enrollment program. We're going to expand that. The, the objective is to expand that to our junior class. So historically, we have, for the dual enrollment program, only offered that to seniors. When we originally initiated that program, the goal was to extend that to juniors as well. So in the dual enrollment program, that covers, currently, we, our, our, our seniors that are in the dual enrollment program earn, I believe, 19 college credits upon gra, before graduation. We're going to extend, or the, the plan is to extend to juniors, assuming the grant comes through, and where the juniors will maybe take two college classes, and then they would subsequently fall into the dual enrollment program as seniors. So they would come up to around 25 college credits upon graduation, almost the equivalent of a freshman year. That would be at the high school level. In grade eight, we applied for, this would be for our traditional sort of Washington DC slash New York City trip. So a very traditional trip that eighth grade classes take, specifically for Washington DC, although here we have access to New York sort of along the way. So this would be to fund the entire eighth grade class for their Washington DC trip. So I want to be really clear that these programs, outside of dual enrollment, what, what I'm going through is open to every student at the grade level. In fact, they will all be invited unless the, the parent, quite frankly, opts out. We don't want, you know, the, the objective here is traditionally, we did a lot of fundraising for the DC trip. We had families that just weren't able to go, the fundraising, et cetera. We want to remove all those hurdles and, and provide these enriching experiences. So eighth grade is a DC-New York City trip. Seventh grade is a little closer to home, but is a traditional Boston trip, so it would be an all-day trip. You know, do the Freedom Walk, the Freedom Tour, I should say, Quincy Market, probably end of the day with a trip to see the Red Sox at Fenway, that type of trip. Sixth grade, and this is a smaller trip that we, we currently do, but we would like to roll this into Robinson Broadhurst, is the Hanover Theater in Worcester. So the students go and see, you know, a, a play of some sort that's tied to their curriculum, and that's in grade six. The one I'm pretty excited about as well is, is, this will be sort of alternating years most likely, is grades four slash five will be a nature's classroom trip, which we haven't done in this district for a while. In this particular case, we are targeting Ocean Park, Maine for nature's classroom. It's a science, you know, a science-based trip. We'll be looking at grades four slash five, probably a three-day trip that would be supported by, by Robinson Broadhurst. And finally, grade three is, we are looking at a, a different Hanover Theater trip. So they currently do that. It's very different from the sixth grade trip. They have different programming for different grade levels. That comes to a sum total of our application for Robinson Broadhurst for somewhere around $177,000 is our request. And those would be all-inclusive trips. It would be, you know, everything covered, including chaperones and so on, whatever is appropriate.
The, the trip that the kids are taking to Maine, is that sort of substituting or replacing the, the camp that they used to have? I think it was Camp Tacoa or something like that?
It's a similar, it's a similar initiative, yes. I think they used to go up in New Hampshire somewhere. I think it was more of a middle school trip. Same concept, just on the coast instead of in the mountains. So long-term, something we would like to do, and I'm, I'm not making promises here, but something we've discussed, is a, a lower grade level trip to one type of location, and then a higher grade level trip to something maybe in the mountains, so they could have experience, ocean experience, if you will, and, and more of a mountain experience. So that, that's kind of the long-term plan, and we would probably use Murdoch Trust to use, to do the other one quite possibly. You're welcome.
Mr. Chair? Larry? Just wanted to say that those are outstanding, and my long career, I've, I've, I've gone on all those trips. And the, the nature's classroom one at Ocean Park is unbelievable. It's a great trip, and, you know, I, I think that's probably their first real experience, hands-on experience with the environment and the climate change and all those things that they do. They do some really fun stuff for the kids, and they get them out, out in the nature trails up there and in the ocean and things like that. So it's really a great trip. They're all great trips. And I just, I'm glad, because part of our job, I think, as educating our children is to give them experiences outside the four walls of the classroom and get them out into the world so they can see.
Outside the boundaries of the town.
Yes, because as you know, we have kids that, you know, maybe Pittsburgh, Went, Worcester, or, or maybe even Gardner, about as far as they go. And this gives an opportunity for them to see much more of what's out there. And what, what they can access if, if they commit to a good education, the things that, that are open to them, the opportunities that are there. And so it's, I applaud this use of the money. I think it's in the right bucket. It needs to be, we need it in some kind of an enrichment program. And I know all this stuff can be, can enrich the classrooms. Our DC trip, when I was a middle school principal, our DC trip, we did all across the curriculum as we prepared for the trip. So we did all kinds of activities in math and science and social studies and English, and we read books about it, and we, you know, it, we made the whole trip relevant in every subject area. So it was, it was really great. So I applaud you for that, for this proposal, and when did we find out?
You know, we find out later in the spring, when they kind of come back to the town overall, and, you know, like I said, everybody's applying to Robinson Broadhurst. It's, it's a process across the town. A number of organizations apply. But I just wanted to sort of piggyback a little bit on what you said. We were very specific in, in sort of what we chose to do. You know, a lot of enrichment act, a lot of folks do after-school programs and academic programs, and this was really targeted, it, it's sort of as well, including travel as a, as a form of enrichment, and, and getting that exposure, you know, outside of Winchonin and outside of, of Massachusetts a little bit, for kids to see opportunity, you know, that I think we're, we happen to be in a community that's difficult for our families, and, and that's okay. And what we're trying to do is remove those barriers, and so that it's, it's also not restrictive to a certain subset of students. You don't have to apply. You don't have to do anything. This is, you're going. Your, your parents just have to say yes. And I understand that not every parent will be comfortable with that as well, but we want to make sure that we're not, we don't have any roadblocks for the parent. Your, your child can access this and enjoy and experience those things, you know, regardless of your, of your current situation.
God, all those years that we did all that. God, all those years that we did all that fundraising.
Yeah, and again, like, why are we, you know, we're a fundraiser. We're an impoverished community. You know, we're begging from each other for a couple of bucks. You know, it's just not right. And, you know, we talk a lot about our poverty rate in this town, and impoverished, and we're trying to remove those barriers and put things in place that make us competitive with other communities that don't have those, for our kids to see these things. I think it's really important, so. I'm looking forward to Robinson Broadhurst's response, and through conversations we've had, I know that they're excited about the prospect of no longer funding Chromebooks, and I don't mean that negatively, but they feel, and I agree, that their funds should be used toward, you know, enrichment activities and broadening the minds of our students. And so that's what we're endeavoring to do.
And just look at it. If you look at it, you've got, you've got the humanities, you've got theater and the arts, and of course, on the trips, you'll be going to museums and whatnot. So that's terrific, and you've got some STEM stuff going on with nature's classroom. They do a lot of stuff there, so, you know, you're going right cross-curricular. It's outstanding. It's good stuff.
Thank you.
So congrats to you and your team for this proposal, and I'm sure that Robinson Broadhurst is going to love it.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Larry for bringing up the topic and saying what he said, as well as you're providing a good description of what, why we're doing these things. Unfortunately, and again, maybe I should, just shouldn't, look at social media. But, you know, people, some people out there have a tendency to see these field trips, if that's what you want to call them, as just a vacation for a few teachers and for the kids, to get them out of the classroom. And of course, it's the keyboard warriors that tend to be the most vocal. But these are, these are important programs, important experiences for the kids. And I don't know if some people are afraid of their children's minds being opened and expanded. If so, that's unfortunate, but I think these programs are fantastic, and I would certainly hope that the vast majority of people in this community would support what you're doing with this.
Thank you, and I think you raised really valid points, and I will say, Mr. Murphy understands. I can promise you that going on a trip with all these kids is not a vacation. If anybody has the false idea that that's a vacation, to go on a trip with, you know, whatever, 100 eighth graders, come along. Enjoy the vacation. We'll help out, right? I'll give you that experience. But I think, you know, all joking aside, I recognize what you're saying, and, but I believe in the, you know, trial, experiential learning, listen, what we do in classrooms is fantastic. It is. It truly is. But the things that stick with people, you know, not just kids, but with people, are experiences. And these are experiences that they'll have, not with grandma, grandpa, mom, dad, but with their class, like, they'll remember this forever, and I can just speak for myself, right? Like, the trip to DC when I was a child, and I didn't go in eighth grade, we lived in Texas. They went on that, but my parents couldn't pay to fly me across the country to go. But I was fortunate to have really great grandparents. I can't tell you what I did in fifth-grade science. I don't have a clue. But I can tell you every day's agenda when I went to Washington DC, and what I saw in every one of those museums, and the impact it had on me going forward in life, right? Because I can still talk about it. I can't tell you what I did in my high school science class, but I've got a degree in sciences. But I don't remember those things. I'm not saying that my classes that I took as a kid weren't important. They were. It's all in here somewhere, but the experiences that I had in life are the things that stay with you. And so, you know, again, very similar to the field trip request we had last time, where we're going to be sending kids to all these different places. They're learning things that we can't replicate in a classroom. And I'm really happy that there won't be any limits to offering this to our kids. These are life-changing things for kids, whether they're paying for it or whether we're just able to send them. So it's a really exciting thing, and I'm, like I said, I'm really appreciative to our trust that makes these things happen.
And 177,000 candy bars is a lot of candy bars. I don't think I could do it. The fundraising.
We could flood the town with chocolate.
I don't think I could eat that many candy bars, so I thank the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation.
All right. If there's nothing else on that, I just, I have one other piece, which is just to give an update on the iPad update. Mr. Vine, we will have some iPads, it will be iPads, that we will make available to the committee. Likely sometime in December is when we will have those available for the committee, for everybody to have something here with them and to do some of your work. We will make efforts to set those up in a meaningful way that you'll be able to have icons on the desktop, to have direct access to Google Drive, and, you know, agendas and those types of things that you'll be able to have at your disposal. So our IT director, Bill Clinton, is currently working on that, and we should have something in December to distribute to anyone on the committee that would like to use those. And there will be iPads. You're welcome. Happy to do it. That is what I have for the superintendent's report this evening.
Good deal. Any questions for the superintendent? All right. Thank you for that. Great information. Tonight, Angelina could not be with us, so unless the superintendent has anything from her, nope. I don't think we have a student representative report, excuse me. Angelina is not with us for a very good reason. She is at a conference regarding her student council role. So wishing her well at that event, and looking forward to seeing her at our next meeting. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is subcommittee reports. This is an agenda item that has no topic for this evening. However, I did want to point out that that will be a standing agenda item going forward, so that we can hear back from our subcommittees as you're doing your work. Of course, we have all of the committees that have their regular work. The calendar committee will be coming up not too long from now. You know, the representatives that we have on capital planning and audit will certainly be producing their work at the time that that's appropriate for those committees. But some of the other committees may be active. You know, the wellness committee, the communications committee, the policy committee may be active, and so those reports may come as, whenever that work is done. Either way, we'll leave that item on the agenda as a standing item. And if your committees do have a report, you can certainly let me know and the superintendent or Liz to make sure it gets on the agenda. But we'll cover all of our subcommittee work right there in that item that will stay put. I do believe that the policy subcommittee will be meeting before our next meeting, and so every expectation is that there should be, at least the policy subcommittee have an update at our next meeting. And then, of course, if any of your subcommittees have updates, please, please let us know. Any questions on that? No real new business, except for the items that the superintendent delivered tonight? Any other new business that we should address tonight? I don't think so. And I don't think we have any old business carrying over from previous meetings. We do have one item still on our agenda, not still on, but on our agenda as a future agenda item. That is the update on the ELA search, or I should say, the bringing on and implementing of the new ELA curriculum. We do have the new math curriculum. We got a great presentation on that the other day. And in the near future, probably in the month of December, we're going to have a presentation about where we are with the ELA curriculum. Any other future agenda items we want to put on the docket for the administration now? Larry?
Mr. Chair, graduation.
All right, the event.
The week.
All right, others? Okay, and in our fastest meeting ever, we are at closing member comments, and we'll start with Larry.
I want to thank Nicole for a great presentation tonight. I'm looking forward to getting the copy of it. And it's refreshing to know that our school district has acknowledged the fact that social-emotional learning is really important, and that our families, our kids, our community, and our country, people are hurting from, still from the effects of COVID. And the fact that we're being aggressive in providing services is really, I'm proud of the fact that you guys have taken that initiative. That's great. Thank you.
Greg?
I would echo Larry's sentiments. I also would like to say that a week and a half ago, we had an election, and I would like to thank the volunteers, the poll workers, and the people that put their time and energy into collecting ballots and counting votes, and happy to hear that none of them had to deal with camo-wearing, knitwits, brandishing IR-15s or anything. Our community is better than that. It's nice to see. But just wanted to thank them, because it is sort of one of those thankless jobs. You tend to be anonymous, and, you know, you do your day's work, but they, there's training that goes into that as well, so it is a time commitment, so thanks to them, and thanks for a good election.
Alicia?
Okay. I too am, I was happy to hear what the district is offering. It's the members of the community in terms of mental health, and I think it's long overdue for any community to be able to offer that to its members. And then also, I, it made my evening to hear that students, regardless of their socioeconomic background, will have access to all of those awesome trips. And I agree, anyone thinks that's a vacation for a teacher? I can tell you how it's not. But yeah, no, it's awesome. Those were two great, great things, so.
Let's hear a field trip to upstate New York.
Let's do it.
Oh, brother.
Bring your passport.
All right.
Shovel.
Can't possibly do any better justice to the comments that Larry made about where we are with social-emotional learning and the mental health crisis in America and in our schools. And so thrilled to have the presentation tonight, and also really excited about the enrichment and experiential learning opportunities that the Robinson Broadhurst funds may bring us if approved, so glad to hear that. Thank you very much for a great meeting, folks, and with that, take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We are adjourned.